With discernment and vision, integrity and courage that through the labors of governments, this land and people may be well and truly served and thy good purposes for the common human life be realized in our midst. Oh God, grant us a vision of our country, fair as it might be, a country of righteousness, where none shall wrong his neighbor, a country of plenty, where evil and poverty shall be done away with, a country of brotherhood, where all success shall rest, shall be founded on service, and honor shall be given to the deserving, a country of peace, where government shall rest on the will of the people and the law for the common good. Bless the efforts of those who struggle to make this vision a living reality, inspire and strengthen our people, that they may give time, thoughts and sacrifice to speed the day of the coming beauty of Ghana and Africa. Amen. And we are here today to look at the report of the Auditor General on public boards, corporations and other statutory institutions for the period ended thirty first December twenty twenty four, and also look at some performance audits that were scheduled for today for the Ministry of Agri and the Ministry of Local Government. As part of strengthening the anti-corruption crusade and also accountability and transparency, Parliament amended its standing orders to make it such that where a member, a matter for consideration before the committee relates to the period of administration of the party or the chairperson of the committee, the ranking member of the committee shall be the chairperson for the consideration of that matter. That is in order two, two, nine, four of our standing orders. So on this note, I would like to hand over to the ranking member to chair the proceedings for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Members of the committee, may we introduce ourselves, please?
Chairman, my name is Sebastian Deh. I'm a member of this committee and I'm the MP for Kwando constituency in the Volta region.
Good morning, Chairman. My name is Nano Seaji, Member of Parliament for the good people of Nujapen North and a member of the committee.
Geoffrey Keane is my name. I represent the good people of Nkantasaf and a member of the committee. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Frank Yaboa, MP for Atuma, Mwaviyada North in the Ashanti region, a member of the committee.
Hello, good morning. My name is Akwesi Kenedu, the Member of Parliament for Menshana North constituency, a member of the committee.
Good morning. My name is Samuel Attamills, MP for Comenda Edina Igwafo Abrim, ranking member of the committee but chairing today.
Good morning. I'm Davis Ansah Opoku, the Member of Parliament for Impriso and Vice Chairman of the Committee.
All right.
My name is Abner Osayasa, a Member of Parliament for ITW, is the Chairperson of the Public Accounts Committee of Parliament.
Now we are auditors, please.
Good morning, Honorable Chair. My name is Michael Addo, Assistant Auditor General, Audit Service.
Good morning, Honorable Chair. My name is Kudjo Cheme, Assistant Auditor General, Audit Service.
Good morning, Honorable Chair. My name is William Ejei, Assistant Auditor General, Audit Service. Thank you.
All right, now we are calling SNEAT. And Clark, could you administer the oath, please?
Aye.
Aye, Thomas Sampim.
Swear by the Almighty God.
Swear by the Almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, Minister, can you and your team introduce yourself?
Thank you, Chairman. My name is Thomas Sampim Jako. I'm the Deputy Minister for Finance.
Thank you, Chairman. My name is Kwesi Afrebanini and I'm the Director General for SNEAT.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. My name is Benadet Hoffman. I am the Deputy Director General for Finance and Administration. Thank you.
My name is Joseph Apia Mensa. I'm the General Manager, Management Information System.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Mr. Desmudamua, Acting Chief Internal Auditor.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Mohamed Ajiman, Final Accounts Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Philip Kufisena, Acting General Manager, Operations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Frank Mobila, Acting General Manager, Benefits.
All right, thank you. Oh, other people, I'm sorry.
Honorable Chair, my name is Maybolo Fori. I'm the Acting General Manager, Adminer HR. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Nyoke Mosi Mensa. I'm the Acting General Manager, Finance and Administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Rudyard Idjono Akabutu, Chief Internal Auditor, Ministry of Finance.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Adam Sule, the Deputy Director General for Operations and Benefits.
All right, are we done now? Okay, thank you very much. Just to remind you, you are live on GTV, Facebook and so many other, Parliament TV. You are live on that one also and so many other social media stuff, so just to let you know. Now, let me start with the financials of SNEAT, that is between twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Looking at it, net contributions received, it came up thirty-eight percent more. What accounts for that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will let the DG answer this, but before then, I just want to use this opportunity to inform you that SNEAT is sixty years old and this year they are celebrating the sixtieth anniversary. They have lined up a number of activities. Tomorrow, they have fun games and I'm told on the fourteenth of December, there will be a Thanksgiving service to thank God for sixty years of managing the pensions of Ghanians. And on the thirtieth of December, they are going to have an awards ceremony to recognize companies that have been prompt in the payment of SNEAT contributions. In fact, we are hoping that government will be one of the institutions that will be recognized, but unfortunately, they say our historical records are no good. I can see Honorable Abner nodding to that, but this year we are doing well with our SNEAT contributions. And so next time, government will qualify and be recognized as such. So let us all celebrate SNEAT. We are all future pensioners and so if SNEAT is managed properly, we all stand to gain. And so I will now yield to...
Who do we send the bill to? GTV is requesting payment. This is free advert. So either the Ministry of Finance or SNEAT, who do we send the bill to?
The Public Accounts Committee.
And Minister, will all this reflect in proper benefit or increase in benefits to our social security beneficiaries? All these sixty years, what do we have to show for and will that reflect in the pockets of pensioners, if I should put it that way? Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
This is free advert, you don't have to pay for it.
Yes.
You can grow.
That is what we are all working towards, that SNEAT will manage members' contributions effectively, invest them properly, so that they can make returns and pay good pensions to pensioners. And I said, we are all future pensioners and so now that we have the opportunity, if we contribute our quota in the management of SNEAT properly, we will all benefit one day. So that is what we are committed to doing. Thank you.
All right, so Director General, the increase in the net contributions.
Honorable Chair, thank you very much. The increase in net contributions by thirty-two percent was a function of improved collections on the contribution side. There were improvements on both the government's side as well as the private sector for twenty twenty-three.
Is this Mr. Afre?
Yes.
Yes, because I know he's married to a good friend of mine who is also Abner, so that's why I, yeah.
All right.
That's fine.
So then let's move on then.
Thank you.
Yes. Now, there's a net surplus. And you end up two hundred and seventy-five percent. What accounted for that?
It's a function of two things, Honorable Chair. One, the improvement in collections was one and you realize that whilst the expenditure went up as well, it was not at the same rate at which the collections had improved. So it resulted in a much improved net surplus position.
Okay, now let's go to the financial position. When you get to your current ratio, twenty twenty-three was three point zero to one and then twenty twenty-two was one point six to one. Great improvement out there. It means you'll be able to take care of your short-term obligations. So that is all that I will do, I will ask about your financials, but let's go to management issues. And Honorable Davis Opoku Ansah, we'll ask you about the next one. It's on paragraph ten forty-four.
Thank you, Minister. And this has to do with encroachment on SNEAT undeveloped lands. Nine parcels of undeveloped SNEAT lands covering approximately about three thousand one hundred and sixty-one point two five acres have been encroached upon. And the value of these lands is huge, I mean over eight hundred million Ghana cedis. And we are talking about the Botiano, the West Hills, Accra, Odupon of Ankor between Kasua to Accra. And also your land at Edum has not yet been registered in SNEAT's name as of May twenty twenty-four. First, I want to find out from you what SNEAT has done on this infractions.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. On the nine plots of land at various locations that were highlighted in the report, SNEAT is in a process of regularizing for the encroaches on three of them. We realized that three had been almost totally encroached, so the best strategy to adopt at the time was to sell those lands and get those who had built on those lands to pay for those lands. So to date, SNEAT has recovered twenty-three million cedis and seven hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars from those sales. The regularization is ongoing. The next phase would involve us putting some notifications in the newspapers and letting people know that if they do not regularize before the deadline that we provide, we will then take the necessary steps to protect our interest as well. That's for Botiano, Donkona and Clagon. For Wah and Boga, there was a need for us to do the base mapping, which has now been done and is with the two district assemblies for the scheming to be done, after which we'll take the necessary steps to sell those lands as well. Then there is the land, the OT land at Edum. There's a bit of litigation on that land, so that we would have to go through the legal processes in trying to resolve that. For Aquadum and Odupon of Ankor, the base mapping is currently also underway to ensure that we move to the next phase of trying to get value from those lands. Thank you.
But you said that three out of the nine, I mean sites are being regularized, that we understand. How about the rest, the six remaining? What steps are you taking to ensure that those lands are protected?
Okay, for the other six, for instance, OT at Edum is under litigation. Then we have the base mapping being done for Odupon of Ankor and then Aquile in Kanta. That has to be done before we can get into the phase of regularizing them with the people who are encroached. For whole workers' land as well as Wah, the base mapping has been done, is pending the scheme approval by the district assemblies. Then we will move into the phase of regularizing it for the encroachers and getting the value, commensurate compensation from the encroachers. Thank you.
This infraction keeps on appearing in the books and I think it's important that we attach some bit of importance to it and fast-track the entire process so that we get to protect state lands and if people have to leave and know that they have done their due diligence and can now stay in them, then we do so. So please, I would urge that we attach a bit of importance to it so that next year, when you appear before the committee, Ali's will not see these things happening. But auditors, are you able to confirm the processes as outlined by the CEO?
Yes, Honorable Chair, we have been given some information on the steps that they have taken. We have also reviewed some demand letters that were given to us when we did our follow-up, but I think he mentioned about some amount that has been recovered. We are yet to be apprised with that information.
All right, so please kindly do the needful, Ali's reconcile with the auditors so that we are aware of what is going on. Thank you.
Honorable Chair, thank you.
Chairman, I want to quickly add that the regularization that the DG spoke about is in respect to those that have already been encroached. The remaining land, they have taken steps to wall those that are not too big and they are also taking steps to register them and prevent further encroachment. So the notion should not be out there that the land is available, you can encroach and SNEAT will regularize. The consequences for new encroachment will be more severe and so we want to send that message out there, that we are taking steps now that the land is being registered, we will take every step to protect those assets for SNEAT. Thank you.
Yeah, Honorable Minister, that's why as much as possible, we try not to talk about that, any land anywhere that has been encroached on, because now people are watching, somebody may go there and encroach right now. So your point well taken. The next infraction is on paragraph ten fifty, and Honorable Sebastian Deh will take care of that one.
Thank you, Chairman. This infraction actually, per the Auditor General's report, violates section ninety of the Public Financial Management Act, Act nine to one. And with your permission, Chairman, I read. Public corporation or state-owned enterprise manages its resources prudently and operates efficiently in accordance with the objectives for which the public corporation or state-owned enterprise was established. Also, paragraph nine, three of the Facilities Management and Marketing Proposal twenty twenty-three, which was done by KPMG for SNEAT, requires or recommended that the prices for some properties be priced at a discount or recommended some discount to ensure sales of those properties. And I make reference particularly to some properties developed for SNEAT at Clagon. The auditor or the auditor general per its report again found out that these houses at Sakumono numbering one hundred and fifty-two be sold as at February twenty nineteen. However, five years on, KPMG's recommendations have not been met. My question to the witness is, what is the status of the sale of these properties? Thank you, Chairman.
Honorable Chair, the properties in question are yet to be sold. We realized quickly that the prices at which KPMG had recommended for the sale to happen were a bit on the high side. So RSS, which is one of our subsidiaries, has struggled to sell at that price point. We are in conversations with the military who have shown interest in buying those properties. We actually have received a proposal from them and we are in discussions to see how we can quickly close those conversations and get the sale done. In addition to that, the mine workers' union have also shown interest in buying two of the blocks of us and we are pretty confident that by half year next year, we should be in a position to have sold these apartments based on new valuations that are being done as well. Thank you.
Chairman, I wait to understand that the forty townhouses at Sakumono and one hundred and fifty-two apartments in Clagon, none has been sold as of date.
Honorable Chair, that is correct. None has been sold.
Thank you, Chairman.
But you have a strategy to sell these properties?
Honorable Chair, yes. Currently, we are in talks with the mine workers' union who are buying portions of those properties as well as the Ghana military, who have actually given us a proposal with payment terms to purchase and use it for a barracks as well. Thank you.
All right, let's move on. The next infraction is on paragraph ten fifty-seven, and Honorable Akwesi Kenedu will hand out that one, please.
Chairman, thank you very much. So this infraction has to do with some unrecovered loans, that is about one point six billion Ghana cedis and five point eight million dollars. These were loans advanced to eight different companies. What is the status of recovery of these loans? The balances are here. You talk about Kumasi Abatwa, Golden Beach Hotels, Ridge Royale Hotel, Intercity STC Coaches, GOG Road Fund, Trust Logistics, RSS, that you said is your subsidiary, and Switchback Developers. What is the status of recovery of these loans? So if you can take them one after the other?
Honorable Chair, for the loans, Kumasi Abatwa has struggled to repay the loans. They have offered some lands adjourned in the Abatwa for sale as part of their strategy to raise funding in paying the loan. We've given them our approval for them to proceed, sell and make the payment to SNEAT. For Golden Beach Hotels, that's La Palm, Almina and Busia, the three hotels have struggled year on year, so it's been difficult for them to meet their loan payment obligations. Those three hotels are the type of hotels that we really need to seek partnership, redevelop and remodel to ensure that they are back on their feet. So for those hotels, it will require a bit of time and a restructuring of the loans to enable the loans to be paid. Ridge Royale has paid off the loan three and they are making, they are also making installment payments for loan two. So for Ridge Royal Hotel, the loan repayment is ongoing. For Intercity STC, and we need some support before they can get into the state in which they can be making these loan payments. For STC, one of the considerations that we are looking at is to try and convert some of this into equity so that it frees up their balance sheet to enable them, get the requisite funding from banks to retool and get into the space into which STC was when we were growing up and we were all happy with them. We are in discussions with the Ministry of Finance on the road fund outstanding amounts and I'm sure the Minister, the Deputy Minister, sorry, will speak to that. Then for Trust Logistics, Trust Logistics has offered to SNEAT some adjourned lands belonging to them in swap exchange. Our recommendation was for Trust Logistics to make the sale themselves and to pay off the loan. We've given them up to June next year to try and close that transaction and get the payment over the line. For RSS, RSS relates to the unsold properties. Three things are happening on RSS. One, we are seeking to sell the townhouses and the apartments to pay down on the loan. Two, we've taken over portions of the land that was used for the development and we are rezoning them to enable SNEAT sell those and also pay down the loan. The rest, we would have to make a demand on RSS after the reconciliation is done for the payments to be done. SDL, which is Switchback Developers, that loan had not been paid, but SDL had agreed with SNEAT to hand over some of the apartments for SNEAT to own in pass exchange for the loan. Valuation of those properties is ongoing. We're looking at two options. One, we will seek to sell the apartments as they are and then if we don't, we are not able to sell that quickly, the alternative that we are looking at is to give the apartments to Labadi Beach Hotel, which is one of the subsidiaries, to run it as apartments by Labadi, that we can get long-term value for that investment. Thank you.
CEO, I seem to have a bit of a challenge, but first and foremost, let's do Ridge Royale. You said they are paying, but according to the audit report, they've not paid anything. And for SDL that you said they've not paid, they have paid something by the report here. They've made interest payments and they've also made principal payment that have drawn down the loan balance. But for Ridge Royale, interest payment nothing and principal payment nothing. So I probably think you may want to revise that note, but on much more serious note, you see the first infraction we talked about was your inability to secure the lands that you do have. Plenty of those lands, about three thousand acres of land, part of it you said had been completely taken over and we are now trying to give to those people who have encroached officially. But in this repayment, you are proposing land acquisition from the debtors to offset those loans. For instance, Abatwa, you said you've given the go-ahead. RSS, you said, they have to sell and bring back. Now bringing on board again more lands. Do you think it will be beneficial to the interest that you hold by taking all more lands that you could not even have secured the first ones that you did have?
Honorable Chair, thank you very much. The, in the case of the Abatwa, like we said, we've asked the Abatwa to sell themselves and pay us. In the case of RSS...
No, wait. The Abatwa initially said that you've given them the go-ahead. But RSS, that is where you said they have to go and sell and come and pay you, and you take part of the properties that they have for that. And for the last one, I would have come to that, but let me add that. You said we are going to give part of those lands to Labadi to operate. And they are part of the hotels. They are part of the Golden Beach Hotels that you said are not profitable. Labadi, La Palm. Or Labadi is not part of that one. They are profitable, so you want to give that one to them. So for the first one, Abatwa, you said you've given them the go-ahead. But RSS is the one that you said they have to go and sell and bring.
Honorable Chair, let me please clarify. For Abatwa, we've given them the go-ahead to sell and pay SNEAT. For RSS, we've taken over portions of the land. Now, the portions that we've taken over relates to the portions that have been walled and well-secured currently. And if you take a look at Clagon today, it's one of the in-demand areas in Accra right now. So we are pretty confident that it gives us an opportunity to quickly sell and recoup portions of the investment back. Thank you. Now, on Labadi is profitable. So we were of the opinion that if we gave the SDL apartments to Labadi to run as apartments by Labadi, it was going to give us a long-term value in the absence of a quick sale of the apartments. Thank you.
In the case of the RSS, that was a joint venture, right?
Honorable Chair, yes. It was a joint venture with Reggie Manuel.
Okay.
So, sir, let me come to paragraph one-zero-six-three. No, one, one-zero-six-two. And it's on the Golden Beach Hotels Limited. You claim that it was part of the hotels earmarked for participation of a strategic investor. Are these hotels still struggling? I mean, what is the status of these hotels?
Honorable Chair, all three hotels are struggling.
The three hotels are struggling?
All three.
Are you, are you still in the business of looking for a strategic investor?
Yes, we are seeking for a strategic investor for La Palm, Elmina Beach Resort, and Busia. However, for SNEAT Guesthouse, Ridge Royale, and Labadi Beach Hotel, we do not intend to seek any strategic investors coming in. We believe that those three hotels should be allowed to run on their own and make profit. Labadi Beach Hotel, for instance, in twenty-twenty-four, made profits in excess of eighty million Ghana cedis. Thank you.
Can you confirm to this committee that the decision by SNEAT to give out these hotels was solely a decision by SNEAT? And not...
No, please, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Please, Chairman.
Anyway, Mr. Chairman has overruled that question. I was going to attempt a response. Thank you. No question has been overruled, Minister. CEO, I want to understand from you that the decision to look for strategic investors to support these struggling hotels, as you have confirmed on this committee, was a decision by SNEAT and SNEAT alone. Kindly confirm that for us.
Mr. Chairman, I respectfully want to say that this is a response that I don't think the current DG is clothed with information to respond to. When he says, and he just stated that SNEAT intends to look for a strategic investor, we would want to give assurance that any decision to involve a strategic investor will be carefully looked at and will be in the interest of SNEAT. We will not do that for any politically exposed person. SNEAT will take a decision that will be in the interest of SNEAT and for pensioners of this country. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Minister. And thank you for the confirmations that, one, these hotels, the Golden Beach Hotels, continue to struggle. That, two, the current government that you are the deputy minister for is still looking for strategic investors to invest in these hotels. And, three, you are not going to give these hotels to any politically exposed person. I want to say on record that the Esweal Administration's effort at giving these hotels out was not to a politically exposed person. And so, please, just be mindful so that we continue to protect Ghanaian interests. But I, I, I want to state on record that this confirmation that we are giving is, is prudent. It helps governance. And, and I think it's important that we move forward realizing that it's not everything that we propagate with. Thank you very much.
Honorable Chair, thank you. But I would want to clarify quickly the matter of the hotels that we are seeking strategic partnership on. It is just the Golden Beach Hotels. That is La Palm, Elmina, and Busia. We do not intend to bring in any strategic partners on Labadi because Labadi is doing well and paying dividends. Labadi in twenty, twenty-twenty-three paid dividends of sixteen million cedis. Last year, they are yet to declare dividend, but they made profits in excess of eighty million Ghana cedis. We won't touch Ridge Royale, and we will not touch SNEAT Guesthouse as well. So for those doing well, we've taken them out of the hotels that were under consideration previously. We are only focusing on the three that are struggling. And I wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
See, let me ask. Are, are these loans that you give, give you equity investment in the companies? Because when you say "we", "we", if they take loan from you, it's a debt on their books, and you only go to receive. Some decisions to take would have to be by them and not you. But if you say "we" and "not", it means either you are an equity shareholder in these hotels, is SNEAT an equity shareholder in these hotels that they gave loans to?
Honorable Chair, yes. SNEAT is the hundred percent owner for the Golden Beach Hotels.
Okay. So with the Intercity STC, you said they would propose a payment plan? That is according to the response that you gave to them. Have you had any proposal from them yet?
Honorable Chair, not yet. STC submitted a proposal of retooling and getting new buses, which would then put them in the situation where they could generate enough cash flows and make the payment. Our view was that we had already invested enough resources in STC and had not had the commensurate returns coming. So our suggestion to STC was we are more alignable to converting the debts into equity to free up their balance sheet so that they on their own can then borrow, retool, and generate the cash flows that they seek to have. Thank you.
Thank you. Auditors, can you please confirm these, some of these arrangements as outlined by SNEAT in terms of trying to recover these loans with the Abatwa to the Switchback SDL Limited?
Honorable Chair, yes. On our follow-up, the shared information on some of these strategies and plans that they have in place. But it is when they have been actioned then we can really come back to the committee and provide confirmation of what actually has been done. But these are plans, these are strategies that they want to embark on. So let's see how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Digie, my last one. Try and put in more effort. These underlying figures are a bit scary, and they are contributions of Ghanaian workers. It ought to be invested in profitable ventures so that at least you'll be able to pay for their pensions in terms of annuities to them. Once they end up in non-viable ventures, it becomes a bit scary. And our future wouldn't be that bright. And I know SNEAT is the only backbone to hold the pensions of Ghanaians and the workers of this country. So try as much as possible. Let's try and redeem some of these. And where we think we can find strategic partners, let us do that boldly and do it well so that at least we can free ourselves of some of these struggles. Thanks.
Thank you, Honorable Chair.
All right, and the next infraction is on paragraph ten-sixty-nine. And Honorable Frankie Abou will take that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It relates to overdue rent of seven-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand. And auditors in the audit noted that twenty-three tenants owed SNEAT a total of seven-nine-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-six. And if you look at the table of the tenants, the debtors, you can see Ghana Commercial Bank, Shraj, Maslock, and some other government agencies. So what's making it difficult for you to recover these, these monies? Is it, why, why not put in much effort or what? I know that Ghana Commercial Bank has paid, and Shraj II has paid. No, Shraj hasn't paid yet. If you look at Shraj, there are other private companies that are not paying. So what's the problem? Director General, what's actually the problem?
Honorable Chair, out of the seven-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand has been recovered from eighteen of those tenants. It's only five private sector tenants who are currently in debt of about sixty-three-thousand, two of which are already even defunct. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So have you put, have you put in measures that will prevent this from recurring? Because it's not, it's not good. We need the money. It's our money, so it might be invested. So have you put in much effort and programs or policies that will prevent this from recurring?
Honorable Chair, thank you very much. Among the measures that we've instituted this year is to have a monthly investment council that gets those that manage our properties, our investments, to come engage the entire Esco on the monthly performance. These are accountability measures meant to drive the right response and get us to, to get our investments functioning the way we, we seek to. I can assure you that by the time we appear before you a year from now, we'll have a much better story. Thank you.
Thank you, Director General. Auditors, Director General mentioned some amount that has been collected now. So can you confirm, please?
Honorable Chair, what we can confirm per our last visit was an amount of twenty-four-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventeen-point-six-five that has been recovered. And so if since then, there has been some additional recoveries, we are yet to be shared with that information. Thank you.
Digie, is it a case that if we cover some, but you haven't given the details to the auditors or what?
Honorable Chair, we would share with the auditors the total that has been recovered year-to-date on, on all of those investments. As at the, the beginning of this month, we had actually recovered seven-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand out of the seven-hundred-and-ninety-three. The only outstanding is sixty-three-thousand. So we would, we would give the data to the audit service so that it's captured properly. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Chairman, thank you.
The next infraction is on paragraph ten-seventy-six. Honorable Nasser will take care of that one.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Chairman. Director General, my, my infraction is on ten-seventy-six. Chairman, the Director General is my very good friend. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, just go ahead and ask him the question.
We celebrate the same birthday.
Wow.
Man, same year. Same year. Question. My infraction is on the Bogatanga SNEAT Guesthouse, commissioned in the year two thousand. It's been abandoned since twenty-fourteen. A paper was submitted to the board to consider the options on the way forward. I want to know if the paper has been duly dealt with and how is the way forward on this national asset. Thank you.
Honorable Chair, thank you very much. The Bogat guesthouse was part of our strategy years back to provide accommodation for our staff and also to expand activities in the hospitality sector. Clearly, that's an area that we want to disinvest from and try and put a bit of cash into the fixed income securities as part of our strategy and also in line with the NPR rules. The current board received a request to sell off this asset. It was same recommendation from the previous board as well. We've asked for a more current valuation to be done on the property. Once the valuation values come in, we will table it back to the board and take the appropriate decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairman.
All right, the next infraction is on paragraph ten-eighty-one. And Honorable Hotojeh will take care of that one.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker.
I'm not the speaker yet.
I'm a member of parliament, so I'm not surprised. Director General, this particular infraction has to do with some four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-seven institutions that have defaulted in the payment of the, of their contributions to SNEAT. As at thirty-first December twenty-twenty-three, further review by the auditors showed that, surprisingly, these institutions have been active and have submitted their monthly contribution reports for validation. Yet, those payments have not been made to SNEAT. The institutions include Edung Branch, Asafu, Suame, Tamale, Yendi, Bogatanga, to the twin of fifteen-million-three-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-and-sixty-five Ghana cedis. The auditors recommended that management should take steps to recover these monies and show evidence for verification. My question is, has management done that?
Honorable Chair, management has recovered seven-million-four-zero-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-five-point-five-five out of the fifteen-point-three-million, involving three-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty institutions. The action has also been taken on the outstanding balance of seven-point-nine-one-two-million. One-twenty institutions have been referred to LIGA for the requisite action, as well as five-hundred-and-thirty-three institutions owing five-point-four-million have also been referred to LIGA. The remaining seven-hundred-and-seventy-seven, seven-hundred-and-seventy-four institutions are being pursued through a special recovery exercise that we are currently engaging in. And we are hopeful that by the time we come here next year, we would have improved from the seven-point-four-million collected to up past ten-million by then. Thank you.
Auditors, can you confirm that half of the said money has been recovered?
Yes, Honorable Chair.
per our last visit, the recovery is seven million hundred and two thousand seven hundred and ninety-six point zero eight. So it's obvious that there has been some additional recoveries, which we'll have to reconcile with SNEAT. Thank you.
Auditors, have you been notified or are you aware of the actions they said they have so far taken to recover the rest of the money?
Yes, Honorable Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. I'm done.
Thank you very much. The next infraction is on paragraph ten eighty-seven. And Honorable Kletus will take care of that one.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, this infraction is on non-enforcement of agreement terms to collect overdue contributions to the tune of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-four Ghana cedis. SNEAT, we, we, you have twelve institutions defaulting. And you were supposed to take legal actions to recover the said amount. But we noticed that based on management responses, you still have a balance of one hundred and seventy-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-six thousand Ghana cedis, fifty-six, fifty-nine persons to collect. I would like to find out whether this money had been recovered.
Honorable Chair, additional recoveries have been made. As we speak, the remaining balance is thirty-two thousand six eight three point zero five. And it's only two out of the twelve institutions that currently owe. Of the two, one has ceased operations, but the employer continues to make payments because of his commitment to the arrangement we've done. So it's thirty-two thousand six eighty-three that is currently outstanding out of the two thirty-seven, with only two of the institutions still owing. Thank you.
Auditors, can you confirm this?
Honorable Chair, his assertion is accurate. Thank you.
So, SNEAT, when do you intend to collect the remaining? Do you have any payment plans with them?
We, Honorable Chair, will continue pursuing the remaining two. One actually has gone defunct. So that's a bit more of a difficult conversation because the company itself is, is gone down. But we will keep pushing and ensure that as much as possible, we recover the thirty-two points, thirty-two thousand six eighty-three that's outstanding on those two names. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. SNEAT, you are discharged.
Thank you.
The new DG of SNEAT, I wish you all the best. And that same mindset that you had in the bank, that you, you helped the bank to grow. I hope you'd use that same skills and mindset to help SNEAT also grow. So I wish you all the best, yourself and your team.
Honorable Chair, thank you very much. And I would want to say a big thank you to my friend. I wasn't surprised she decided to step aside. Thank you.
Okay, now, we are calling our government communications, please. Please give us about five minutes till our auditors settle down.
G N E and graphic, and then we can begin. Thank you. Please, those sitting behind the minister, which agency are you from? They are all auditors? Oh, okay. So then we can swear them in.
Aye.
Aye.
Swear by the almighty God.
Swear by the almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
G N E and graphic, and then we can begin. Thank you. Please, those sitting behind the minister, which agency are you from? Please, those sitting behind the minister, which agency are you from? They are all auditors? Oh, okay. So then we can swear them in.
Aye.
Aye.
Swear by the almighty God.
Swear by the almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Honorable Minister, you've been sworn in, right? Okay, we'll start with Ghana Publishing Company.
If I may create your audience, the managing director will join us presently. He is downstairs because of a miscommunication. But Ghana News Agency and ISD are here. So if you can start with them.
Okay. Then we'll go with Ghana News Agency. All right. Please.
Also been joined by the finance director for G B C.
But he's not been sworn in. He's not been sworn in.
Has he been sworn in? Okay, then let's, let's let him take the oath, please. Let the others come in and then we add them all together.
So, sir, accountant, finance director, kindly sit at the other side. You cannot sit here. No, you should sit, yes. Until you are sworn in, you cannot. Yeah. Yeah.
The one that we're waiting for, is he the one here? Okay, publishing, then. Yeah, that's, yeah, swear the two in, please. Okay, when he gets here, then we'll.
The G N E manager director is here. So he will come in present.
All right. So swear those two in, please.
Aye.
Aye, Nana Kwezi Buete.
Swear by the almighty God.
Swear by the almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So we have been joined by the managing director of the Ghana News Agency.
Aye.
Aye, Albert Kofi Owusu.
Swear by the almighty God.
Swear by the almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Honorable Minister, can you and your colleagues, your delegation introduce yourself, please?
So my name is Felix Squachi Owusu. I am the Minister of State in charge of government communication and also the spokesperson to the president.
Honorable Chairman, my name is Albert Kofi Owusu. I am the general manager for Ghana News Agency.
Honorable Chairman, my name is Nana Kwezi Buete. I'm D M D for the Ghana Publishing Company.
Honorable Chairman, my name is Joseph Bafo. I'm the director admin Ghana News Agency.
Honorable Chairman, my name is Joseph Bafou. I'm the director admin Ghana News Agency.
Honorable Chair, I'm Radhi Abdallah, Head of Accounts, Ghana News Agency.
Honorable Chair, my name is Francis Young Otu. I'm with the Information Services Department.
Honorable Chairman, my name is Francis Anav, Director of Ghana Broadcasting Corporation.
Alright, now, let's start with the Ghana Publishing Company, please. And Honorable Akwesi Kenedu, we'll start with that one.
Thank you, Rankin Chair. M D, welcome.
Thank you very much, Honorable.
This would have to do with your financials. And looking at your financials, in the year twenty twenty-three, there seemed to be a huge turnaround for the Ghana Publishing Company. If you can share that with us. I say so because if you look at your printing, it increased by almost fifty percent, gazetting increased by almost forty-four percent, publication and forms thirty-four percent. And of greater significance is the increase in your net assets of about three thousand percent. So there seems to have been a turnaround in the year twenty twenty-three. What accounted for that?
Very well. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. You would notice that twenty twenty-three was a return from COVID. Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, the company barely had any activity because of COVID. So, the figures prior to twenty twenty-three were figures returning from COVID. And the quantum jumps were because the previous years were literally fallow periods for the company. And the trajectory since then has been an upward increase in revenue and everything that's happening for the company. So I think that twenty twenty-three was the beginning of an upward trajectory for the company that has been, you know, a grave going up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, I may and will agree with you in some parts. If you look at printing, yes, I believe that a return from COVID would increase that gazetting. But when you look at non-current assets, there ought to be a deliberate attempt at increasing it in that way. Non-current asset would mean that acquisition of equipments to do that. Instead of in the year twenty twenty-three, there were, there was retooling. That probably may have happened with the acquisition of some equipment to aid with the Ghana Public Publishing Company to be able to function and do its work better.
That is the case, Mr. Chairman. In twenty twenty-three, having realized the volume of works that had come in, there was a definite need for improvements in the equipment, level of equipment that we had. Again, that is a trajectory that has, you know, continued even from twenty twenty-three. The company had significant deficits in equipment. So as and when revenue came in, there was deliberate effort to continue to improve the asset base of the company. And that is a trajectory that is still ongoing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think retooling is very important and you should keep it up because it does also turn around your current ratio.
Thank you.
So I believe that if you continue in that angle from twenty twenty-three, Ghana Publishing will be good because we need that. So, Mr. Chairman, the financials are good and the turnaround is also very impressive from twenty twenty-three, so we are good to go.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, let's go to Ghana News Agency. And that one will also look at your financials. Okay, the financials of Ghana News Agency. Oh, your grant, you have a grant, went up twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. Why did it go up that high?
Honorable Chair, could you repeat the question, please?
I was talking about the grant. It went from seven point three million twenty twenty-two to eleven.
Honorable Chair, that will have to do with the compensation of employees. G N A is a COVID entity. That is, we are fully subvented by the state. And so salaries and goods and services and capes budget are all drawn from the government's subvention. And in the year twenty twenty-three, we recruited about seventeen new staff to fill various vacancies that had been created. And so that accounted for the search in the expenditure. Plus, apart from the salaries we pay our staff, we also pay compensation-related allowances. And these are the fuel allowances, car maintenance allowances. So when you recruit about seventeen, that comes along with the increase as well in that, in that sector. Thank you.
It's interesting that when you had lower staff, you spent one point one million on goods and services. When you added seventeen more people, goods and services rather went down. How did you manage that?
I should also add that in twenty twenty-three, there was salary, broad salary increase by the state. So that also impacted the figure that you see there.
You answered goods and services.
Oh, okay. Sorry, could you please repeat that question?
Okay, I will. I said when you had lower staff, number of people in twenty twenty-two, your goods and services was one point one million. Now, when you had more people and increase in salaries, your goods and services went down. How did you manage that?
Honorable Chair, it depends on the subvention we receive from the state. In some years, we receive very low funds. In other years, the receipt could be appreciable. So, everything that we do in terms of our financial, you know, support comes from the state. In particular, I would say even twenty twenty-four, we had approval of one point six million for goods and services because it was an election year and we had laid out a very comprehensive program to cover the elections. But by the end of the year, we had about six hundred thousand. That's a third. So it fluctuates. It depends on when finance can afford to give us the, so that's how it is.
What is this special expenses over here of two hundred and thirty-one thousand?
Which, please, Honorable Chair?
The special expenses on the expenditure side, there was two hundred and thirty-one thousand.
Honorable Chair, I would honestly plead with you that we got this invitation only today, about two hours ago. So we've had to rush from the office and pull things together. So I would have to refer to my team about that, two hundred and thirty-one.
You have an accountant over here?
Yes, but I have to say the accountant only took over this year.
Accountant, he took over this year?
Yeah, she took over this, just this year, about two months ago. So, Honorable Chair, if you would permit us, we could, yeah, finish with the details a little later, please.
Okay, your current assets, and non-current assets, from two point one million to fifty-six million. Madam Accountant, do you know how it went?
Honorable Chair, so from the Controller Office, there was a notice that we look at our assets. So there was a revaluation of our assets across the region, and that's how come the numbers went high. The National Account Office, they usually do quarterly engagement with state-owned entities. And so within that period, there was an engagement and we did a revaluation of all our assets in, across the regions.
Audit service, how is that possible? So, does it mean their assets were lying, idle, not captured in their books or anything? Because if this really is not an injection of new assets and your assets, your non-current assets was two point one million and you have done a revaluation, not because you have put in new equipment, but just revaluation and it's jumped to fifty-six million, then we have a problem in this country. Meaning our assets are lying idle, we haven't captured it in the names of the agencies which owns these assets. Is that the case?
Yes, Honorable Chair, that has been the case before the adoption of the Ipsas accruals. And because of where we are growing as a nation, there is the effort to revalue some of these assets. Most of them were carried on our books at the old cost. At the time we bought those assets, those were the values that were still on our accounts, on our records. But after the decision to go the Ipsas accrual way, all these assets are being revalued. And so you realize that some of the entities that appeared here, they've revalued the assets and the values are a bit higher than what they had before. So that is a situation, so exactly as he indicated to us here. Thank you.
So, audit service, from two million, two point one million to fifty-six million without new assets, but just revaluation of existing assets?
Yes, Honorable Chair, it's possible. It's very possible.
I would be very grateful if we can be finished with the documentation on this because from two million, assets on the books of Ghana News Agency was two million, and there was a revaluation, and then it jumped to fifty-six million. Then by this, isn't it the same with a lot of government agencies or public institutions and boards? Meaning our whole of government accounts does not reflect a true and fair view of assets in this country?
No, Honorable Chair, like I said, most of these organizations have had their assets revalued. And so that has been captured in the whole government account. And when Controller appeared here, they admitted the challenge that there are some, there's still some work that has to be done in this particular area when it comes to having the real values of these assets on our accounts. So some work is being done in that area, but most of these organizations have had their assets revalued. For instance, an office building that was done some years ago, maybe about twenty years ago, you may have a cost or a value of about hundred thousand, and that had been the value on the books. But now when you revalue that particular office building in a very prime area like the Ghana News Agency, obviously the value will go that high. Yes.
Okay, so you got a proper valuer, a valuer that we can, valuer whose work can stand the test of time. So that tomorrow, if we come back to revalue or to look at it, we wouldn't be told that even the fifty-six has to go down to something lower. Because jumping from two point one to fifty-six, only on the base of, the basis of revaluation, it's, 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 well, it's a bit worrying. And so we'd be happy if you can finish, G N A, you can finish the committee with your accounts and the list of your assets in twenty twenty-two, the list of assets that was captured in twenty twenty-two and the revaluation bringing your amount to fifty-six million in twenty twenty-three. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you very much. Just let you try your current ratio. It went from one point one to one, that is twenty twenty-two, to two point three to one. I will leave it as that. That should be all for your financials. But let's go to, you don't have any management issues. But then let's go to Graphic Communications Group. And Honorable Abana Osayasa will handle. Oh, you are not here yet. Okay. So what about G P A C Limited?
It's the same group.
The same group? Okay. And.
It depends on the matters at hand. For instance, I'm briefed on some finding on a a matter relating to alleged violation of the Procurement Act, for instance, in the sourcing of a company to service one of their machines. So I'm briefed on that. If it's a matter that comes up, I'll be able to speak to it.
Well, there's also a bit on their financial performance and financial position.
Yes, yeah, it keeps on a side to side now. And we in government have expressed worry about the state of affairs at Graphic. Indeed, they've written a number of letters to me indicating that they are distressed financially. Part of it has to do with dwindling sales because of the challenge posed by new media and the dwindling reliance on newspapers for information. So that is affecting their operations. They have difficulties with their equipment also. It breaks down frequently. And therefore, they are unable to meet some of the deadlines that they give to clients. And this results in loss of work. So there are a number of factors that we are seeking to address comprehensively in the whole government, media, organization, ecosystem. So it is not really due to mismanagement or anything of the sort. It is just the realities of the time, which requires some reform in order to reposition them to, to, to return to profitability. Yeah.
Minister, I wish they were here to answer to the specifics in the accounts because I would need certain explanation.
Yeah, I expect them to be here before the session ends, so hopefully they should be here. Yeah. Thank you.
You can handle the management issues, right? Then Honorable O P K will handle the management issue for Graphic on paragraph thirteen thirty-eight.
Thank you very much, Senior Felix Aquaba.
G N A, if I'm permitted to respond.
Felix used to be my, my senior from primary school to G S S. Yeah, so, but today is my junior in Parliament. So, Senior, it has to do with some procurement that Graphic did. And they sole sourced it. In fact, reading the response from, from Graphic, I get the understanding that the company involved is a sole distributor of Kodak machines in West Africa.
That is so, that is so.
There was no other option left to them. So I want to find out from the auditors first, what do you have to say about this infraction? Because clearly, they had no other option than to source us.
Honorable Chair, that is exactly the response from the entity, and that is captured in the report. But I think that the committee would have to take a decision on it. But I think that the committee would have to take a decision on it. We have indicated their response in the report. But as to whether that is justifiable or not, I think the committee can take a decision on that.
So Felix, I think the challenge here is that even if you have to sole source, you still need approval of PPA. And Graphic failed in seeking the approval of PPA in this regard. And I think it's something that they have gone against the law. I mean, sole sourcing still needs approval of PPA. So with this, I'll leave it to Chairman to take a decision. It's a bit dicey. Yeah.
Oh yes, to the extent that there's a violation that is detected and their answers are not responsive, the committee is at liberty to direct the next steps going forward. We will be happy to ensure that any such violation is cured at the level of government. Yes.
Honorable Minister, the recommendation of the auditors is for us to sanction under section 92 of the Public Procurement Act, 2003 Act 63, as amended, should be applied to the head of the entity. We also recommend that management should always adhere to the provision in the Procurement Act as stated above in all office procurement activities. And the sanction is for us to recommend that it goes to the Attorney General for prosecution when it comes to procurement. They could have done something with PPA and they chose not to do it. So Attorney General will let you know where your faith lies.
Well, very well, Mr. Chairman. As I indicated, as governments, we are all for transparency and ensuring that these exercises in procurement are kept. So whatever action you deem fit will be accepted by us. Yeah.
Thank you very much. The other one is also on financials, GPAC. Yes. And I guess, apart from GPAC, and then the last question for Ghana News Agency. That's it that we have.
Minister, whilst we wait for Graphic, I have, so in recent times, we've seen some good efforts from GTV, especially their online portals, trying very much to encourage people to pay their TV licenses. In fact, there's been a league, a league table that shows members of Parliament who have paid and those who are yet to pay. In fact, I've had constituents tag me, encouraging me to pay. I did mine somewhere in October, and it's an annual ritual for me. But 276 members of Parliament, the money that GTV needs to run, you, I mean, this 60 cities paid by MPs cannot sustain what GTV needs to operate. What is it that you are doing at the ministry to encourage people to pay their TV licenses? And I know that the TV licenses thing regime is governed by law. I mean, the TV, the television licensing regulations, as amended in 1991, encourages GBC or gives GBC the legal mandate to do that. But I'm also aware of a court ruling in 2018 that suspended GBC and its agents to not prosecute defaulters. What innovative ways are you bringing on board to ensure that GTV generates the needed resources in terms of the TV licensing so that they, I mean, deliver and deliver effectively for us?
Thank you very much. But for the record, let me state that I have paid my TV license five years in advance. So that, of course, charity...
You say five years in advance?
Five years in advance, yes.
You must be a rich man.
No, not at all, not at all. They say charity begins at home. So I would not have the moral authority to encourage others to pay if I do not set the tone. Let me indicate that unlike other jurisdictions where the enforcement for the payment of TV license is higher, ours is a bit lax. And you refer to the court ruling, which also hampers the ability of the corporation, GBC, to go after those who default. So I think the first point of call is to put in place an enforcement mechanism that compels people to pay. The second point, and I've made this point over and over in my interactions with the management of GBC, that people would have to be enticed through content development to pay. First of all, people have to watch your station in order to develop interest in your programming so that they are motivated to pay when you ask them to do so. If they find your programming still and boring and unexciting, they may switch elsewhere and they may not find it necessary to pay any heed to admonitions to pay. So there must be an improvement in the content. Then technology, that enables the organization to track who is watching, the number of eyeballs they have, and how they can get people like this to pay, will be necessary to deploy. And then the ease of payments, how easy is it? To pay thankfully because of the advent of mobile money and money transfer, it's much easier. That's how I paid mine five years in advance. So I think that an amalgamation of these will help us overcome this difficulty. Of one of the ways that we've attempted to draw attention to begin with, you'll be surprised that there are people in this country who do not know that payment of TV license is compulsory and that there's actually legislation backing it. So through the magic being done by the GBC's social media handles, more awareness is being created, and you find that there's greater excitement amongst the public. But again, it speaks to the point of content because of the way that they do their postings. It generates public interest. People follow what they do and therefore their interest is... So a number of things are being done. But let me indicate that TV license alone would be woefully inadequate. The problems of GBC go beyond the payment of TV license. Indeed, at the last reckoning, the last report I saw indicated that they got just about 500,000 Ghana cedis or so from TV license payment. That is a drop in the ocean compared to what they need, compared to the challenges they have. They've had difficulties with payment of electricity, for instance. In some instances, I've had to intervene to get the electricity company of Ghana to restore electricity. They've had legacy debt issues, and then they've had general revenue shortfalls that make their operations difficult. So currently, we are in discussions with CIGA. Let me indicate that even though I have ministerial oversight, most of the reporting is done through CIGA because they're state-owned enterprises. So in collaboration with CIGA, we are developing a roadmap towards transforming GBC and all the other state-owned media organizations, because all of them are suffering. Whereas the books of GNA may look impressive, they themselves have their own challenges. Same can be said for ISD. Even Graphic, which in the past used to lead the way in terms of their commercial viability, is having difficulties. But all of it is because of the way things have been done, which needs to be changed. So in the coming weeks, we should present a report on this to Cabinet for consideration. And once it's approved, we will engage the organizations regarding the transformation program. And we'd more than happy to report to Parliament on the way forward so that together we can fashion out a model to save these organizations. Because the way things are going, if we do not do something, in the next 10 years, they will not, they will no longer be viable. Given the stiff competition that they are receiving from competitors in the traditional media space and then social media. So it's a whole comprehensive program that we are developing. Yes. But on that note, let me encourage everybody to pay TV. Even if it's 500,000, we could do with the money. We could do with the money. So they should, they should keep, they should keep it coming. Yes.
Minister, so thank you very much for the answer. And just to point out that, I mean, for instance, if you come to my constituents in Bresel, and let's say you go to Intumim, where maybe, or let's say you get to Asakraka, where you would have less than 10% of these people on social media, it becomes difficult for them to know that by law, you are supposed to pay your TV license. And I think that the GTV people should come out with some innovative means of reaching out to them. And I'm sure that if they were to go to YCG or to go to Ghana Water, for instance, we know that virtually everybody who pays YCG should have one TV or the other in his house. And so when they are able to get that database and they send an SMS or something to these people, I think it becomes easier for them to generate more money that, concentrating on the political heads to pay. Who would do that? But, and also, you've paid five years. So what if the fee change next year, what do you do?
Well, it means that I have to. Well, if it, if it, the fee comes down, which it never does, then they would have, they would owe me some reimbursement. If it goes up, I'll do a top-up. But that was only to show that a lot more can be done. I think the point you raise is valid. In remote areas where social media penetration is not as high as urban centers, we need more aggressive marketing through programming, GBC itself, because people watch and because it has the widest reach, should be able, through their own programming, put in advertisements that remind people of it, remind people of the legal consequences of not paying and how useful it is when one pays. Through collaboration with the ISD, for instance, the ISD is presenting just about every district in Ghana. So through the education campaigns, their LED, with LED screens and all that. So they'll be able to go around and educate people on a wide number of issues, including the need for us to meet our civic obligations, one of which is the payment of TV license. But as I have indicated, TV license itself is inadequate. So even as we encourage people to pay, we need to improve content. And then we need to do more to sustain their commercial viability going forward. Yes.
Well, just to, just to, just to put on record, and I know that, I know that the administrator of GBC's Facebook page is watching. We are not, I'm not against their approach, because sometimes it can go very hard on people, so that we are...
Well, I think that, what it is is that, and I've had costs sometimes to engage them and find out why this new model is operating, but they've explained that they create their content on the basis of what they think is trending. Social media is not exactly conservative. And sometimes the things that you need to do in order to gain traction and eyeballs may be unconventional. To the extent that it does not blur any ethical lines, it does not defame anybody or put out any offensive content, it may be, it may be out of the ordinary. It may not be in keeping with what we know GBC to be. But once it does not violate any known laws or offend people's sensibilities, it can pass, to the extent that it draws the attention that we want for GBC. I think that the experiment has worked. Even their followership has improved. They have over 600,000 followers as I speak to you. If you compare it to just about two, three years ago, it was quite low. And the Director of Finance is here, he can attest to that. So they've become perhaps the leading social media handler of any media organization in Ghana. It's an impressive achievement. We need to commend the team. There's a whole team here, there's not just one individual. There's a whole team that does the thinking and brainstorm about what to post. But I have always emphasized the need for them to stay within ethical boundaries so that they do not offend sensibilities of people. Yeah.
Minister, I also, as part of you retooling and strategizing to make GBC more competitive, I think you should look at their costs, especially to do with their assets, their buildings. You look at these private TV stations, they have just one big, one small office. Yet the content they put out there, you would think it's a whole universe. GTV has huge assets in terms of building. Maybe we should start thinking of what we can do to those buildings. Can they co-share? Can they, you know, so that they can raise additional revenue in addition to the other revenue handles that they have? They can pair with other people, other TV agencies to reduce their costs. You go to GTV and clearly, if you say you are going to renovate their buildings, it's going to cost you so much, yet their buildings are underutilized. Let me use Joy FM. You see where they have. Look at the content they put out there. You see CT, GH1, the content they put out there. UTV, that's all they have, but the content they put out there. So one major thing that I believe you should look at is their costs and the cost in terms of maintaining the buildings, how to use these huge assets in the form of buildings and to leverage on, to raise more revenue. That will also reduce the amount of money that governments on its own will have to spend in bringing it to the power of the other media, media houses. So that is one thing I believe you should look at, because I, I, I get worried. When I go there, I see their buildings and they need renovation, one, and two, they are not being used to the full. So Minister, as part of the restrategizing, to bring it to that point where they make profits and also people watch, you should consider addressing the cost in the area of the huge buildings that they have. I mean, that, that will help. Yeah.
That is true. Indeed, it's one of the things that we've identified in terms of cutting costs, leveraging existing assets, and being able to recapitalize GBC and the other state-owned media organizations. It's precisely that. Some of the buildings were put out, even in colonial times. So they were built to meet the exigencies of the day. Times have changed. And therefore, you do not need that number of buildings in order to operate. With one tower, you can have all your departments operating from one building. Mr. Kofiose used to be with Joy FM, so he would know. I think it was integral to restructuring them the way that...
Was it by coincidence that I used Joy FM?
Well, I think that is, is, is a prime example, so it's allowed. So GBC itself has thought of doing things that way. And they have engaged me and then governments on some of the things that can be done to ensure that we maximize their assets. They have vast tracts of land all over the country in valuable places. Indeed, the last time that government put in a dime into GBC, apart from paying the compensation of workers, was about 20 years ago, when we bought them some two or three, one or two Obivance, if I'm not mistaken. Since then, they've not received anything from government. I have made it clear to them that government is not in a position to put in any further money. So they have to find their own money. One of the ways of doing that is using a very transparent, open process to leverage very valuable assets that they have currently in order to modernize cut costs and operate more efficiently. That is the only way that they are going to survive. So this plan is integral to the document that we are developing with CIGA. And in due course, we'll make it available to Parliament so that we can all chip in ideas on how to do this. But it's a very valid point that you raise, which we recognize. Yeah.
Minister, we're still waiting for Graphic Corporation, and they are not here. My, my issue had to do with one. I realized that their current assets went up, meaning that they were not, the monies that they were supposed to collect from people in terms of payables to them, they were not, I mean, taking those monies. And in the offices around the ministries, they come and then they leave. I think they have some arrangements with them where they bring newspapers. I look at the quantum of newspapers they bring to these ministries. So that if all the ministries are paying, at least it should reflect positively in their current assets. Then you go and look at their current liabilities too. It is just shooting up. So Minister, these two areas must be watched. They must have an aggressive revenue collection and strategy where they collect the monies from all of us when they offer their services. Because if we don't do that, no matter how government pumps money, if it is the same attitude, then we will not benefit the way we want to benefit. In 2022, their profits, there was a deficit of 4 million, 4.3 million, and then it shoots up to 14 million in 2023. So it tells us there's a lot of tidying up that they need to do. They need to strengthen the management of their financials. And you have to help them, I mean, do that. Because in terms of the newspapers, I think they, they, they have a wide coverage and they reach more customers than any other. And so if we don't help them in that regard, no matter how much you pump money into it, you still have this. So clearly you see that their current ratio is even coming down. So Minister, I don't think we can, we will be able to wait for them any longer, but what we want to tell you is that, please, let them go on an aggressive revenue mobilization.
All right, Honorable Chairperson, what I would do is that, if it is permissible by you and if it's acceptable to you, I will get them to present a document explaining each of the issues that you've raised comprehensively, so that you can study them and incorporate them in your report. That said, I have also had cause to engage them on that particular matter. Because just like G B C, they themselves have been distressed. Indeed, a couple of months ago, they sent me an S O S letter requesting for some logistical support from government, there too, I had to indicate that government did not have the appetite at the time to do so and that they should look within to improve upon their revenue generation, improve upon profitability. But the newspaper business generally has suffered because of the advent of traditional media. So you notice that even the international newspaper organizations are switching to online content, which compels you to subscribe and through that they generate, because people want news on their go. They can no longer wait for newspapers the day before. Now, graphic and others, unless they get exclusives, always are late in the day, they lag behind the news, so they report what has already happened. And in these times, it is not particularly attractive to the news consuming public. So that has affected their sales. They've also suffered from the general economic downturn that we experienced in the last few years. For instance, one of the issues they've decried the most was the costs of importing newspapers. When the dollar went up and the C D depreciated, it really affected their ability to import newspapers. So in fact, I have on my desk a request from them to engage G R A and other organizations to do something about their duty payments because of how costly it was and how it was impacting their operations. They also have aging equipment, indeed, the last time they got new equipment was in twenty ten. That printing machine is still fit for purpose, except that it requires some retro fitting. They tell me that they will need about eight hundred thousand euros to do so, to import their parts and bring it up to an acceptable level of operation. They are not in a position currently to raise that money. So we are still in discussion with them on how they can be assisted to do so. Once that is done, they will return to more operational, because of that they are losing significant clientele, because they cannot meet production deadlines. The machine breaks down too often and therefore it does not make them competitive. And mind you, they are operating in a very competitive environment. There are private printing houses that are doing better, who have less costs than they do. So I've asked them to tidy up their operations and ensure that they return to profitability and particularly pursue an aggressive online content model that rivals any that you find around the globe. That is one way of opening up another revenue stream, because that is where people are and that is where you should reach people with the news, that breaks constantly. I do not believe that going forward, they will be competitive if they continue to remain the way they are in terms of their operations and in terms of the content that they develop. But all in all, it is a very viable, potentially profitable business, which we need to support in every way we can. So I'm still in discussions with them to ensure that these problems are overcome. But like I indicated, I will get them to send you comprehensive responses to the issues highlighted in this document, yeah.
And then Minister, if government can put out a policy, you see all the budgets that we print, all the other printing reports, the reports that we bring to Parliament, if maybe between two government-owned companies, you can share it amongst them.
Sure.
Clearly, it would be a very good source of revenue for them. Because every, almost every sitting, we get a lot of reports and come next week, you're going to have the budget being read and they will give us the budget documents. So maybe you should make a deliberate effort to push some business to Graphic Communication and any other government institution that is in the printing business. And for that one, they will be assured of some revenues that they can use to turn around, whilst government also looks at the bigger picture of equipping them properly. But I must say that they must pursue an aggressive revenue collection strategy, because these are the low-hanging fruits.
That is true.
You give us newspapers, you hardly come back for your money or you don't pursue us aggressively for the monies what is owed you, you know, the typical person will relax. So these are long-hanging fruits that I believe they can pick and also if you can make a deliberate effort, policy, that all our printing should go to, maybe two or three selected.
And Graphic Communication Group Limited, the G P A C, they should be able to handle, they have capacity, they have shown. Indeed, it's interesting to know that there's a Ghana Publishing Company that prints the budget document itself. And they've become so innovative that now they are able to put every M P's name on the budget. So everybody will receive a unique copy of the budget and they will do it. Well, it shows that they have the capacity to be innovative, they have the capacity to do new things. So they are more than happy to take on both. And let me indicate that I've engaged both the Minister for Education and whose auspices significant printing occurs because of the need to print textbooks and essays books for schools. Ghana Water Company Limited, all their bills, to the extent that they remain on paper, can be, the Ghana Publishing Company prints it, they can do same for Y C G, they can do same for all other government agencies. Even if they get twenty percent of all government printing, it will stand them in very good stead to do very good business. Their professionalism is.
Yes, all these value books from G R A, hospitals, I mean, you can make.
So it is something that, in fact, it's something that we've even discussed at cabinets and there's general agreement that that should happen. So I'm engaging the finance minister, so that in this budget, it is actually written into it as a precondition for releasing funding for some of these works, so that Graphic Communication Group and Ghana Publishing, they have the capacity to do it and they will do it with excellence, I can guarantee that, yeah.
Honorable Minister, we've waited and I think we'll pull down the curtains. Thank you very much for. Uh, thank you for coming to Public Accounts Committee.
Thank you very much.
We are done.
Honorable Chairperson, thank you very much.
Minister, respectfully, if you can sit and wait for and listen to our closing remarks. We began on the twenty-seventh and today is the end of this particular sitting and since you happen to be the last person here, I would be grateful if you can just sit in and then listen to us, so. Esteemed colleagues of the Public Accounts Committee, ladies and gentlemen, and today we conclude the scheduled public sitting and hearing of the public accounts of the Ninth Parliament. I, the chairperson of the Public Accounts Committee, therefore have the singular honor on behalf of the Speaker, Right Honourable Alban Sumana Kingsford-Babbin and the entire membership of the Public Accounts Committee to express our sincere gratitude to everyone who has participated and supported our work. I want to use this opportunity to thank the ranking, you've been very supportive, very, very supportive and for that we are grateful. And also to the other members for their impressive commitment and dedication to these sessions. We couldn't have achieved this without all of us here. So today's meeting marks the climax of the month of diligence and painstaking work that we have done. Out of the sixteen reports that were referred to us, we have fully completed ten and for one, we have done about sixty percent, for the other, we have done about ninety percent. And there are a few which we'll need to do outside Accra and so we will be doing the regional visits, which we will start from next year. This journey began on Tuesday, nineteenth August, twenty twenty-five and we have collectively vowed to seek value for every C D expended in the financial year of twenty twenty-four and subsequent reports that have been referred to us. We also promised to thoroughly assess audit responses and constructively engage the leadership of covered entities. Since then, we have successfully engaged almost all the institutions and covered entities cited in the Auditor General's report. Whilst in public sessions here, we have received and noted diverse responses to varying degrees of reported infractions and irregularities. In some instance, needed clarity has been brought to bear. Of course, this improves our understanding and increases the trust in the management of public funds. We've had the opportunity to showcase and commend excelling and prudent institutions. The committee has also had cause to encourage leadership of covered institutions to take hard and necessary steps to correct previous mishaps, missteps and irregularities, while we have also gone ahead to refer some matters to the Attorney General, which we would officially follow up with a letter. We have done this to fulfill Article one zero three of the nineteen ninety-two constitution and Order one five one two of the standing orders of the Parliament of Ghana. As expected, we would go into a closed session and prepare our committee reports and we will submit a report and outline core recommendations to the House for debate and adoption. We intend to work with Parliament and affected agencies to implement the recommendations. We will continue to work diligently to ensure that our recommendations are implemented and that those responsible for any irregularities are held accountable. Ghanaians and the public can be assured that we will publicize the implementation of the recommendations of this committee by covered entities. We intend to liaise with the Speaker and other committees of Parliament to make the implementation of the Public Accounts Committee recommendations a precondition for parliamentary approvals for operations of affected and named institutions. The P A C remains committed to transparency and accountability in the management of public funds. I'd like to thank the witnesses who have appeared before us, providing crucial insights and information. While others' conduct fell short of that of a holder of a public office, for many of you, your cooperation has been exemplary and we appreciate your commitment to good economic governance. I also want to commend G T V and the other media houses that have partnered us throughout these sessions. On your wings and airwaves, we have reached many Ghanaians. By your support, we have delivered on our social contracts with Ghanaians to our team of officers behind the scene, especially the clerk of the P A C and his team, the hazard department. To all and sundry, we say thank you for your coordination and support. And finally, we can't or we couldn't have gotten this far without your Lieutenant General and the auditors who have supported us through and through. We just want to assure you that we will continue to work with you to make sure we all make our public financial space something that we all will be proud of. As we conclude this hearing, we reaffirm our dedication to strengthening Ghana's public financial management systems. We remain focused on the core ideals of transparency, prudence and accountability. Public Accounts Committee, we will continue to work tirelessly to ensure that public funds are utilized efficiently and effectively for the benefit of all Ghanaians. May God continue to bless us all as we all discharge our mandates, thank you so much. So on this note, we thank you all and would like to bring today's session to an end. Thank you and God bless you. And Minister, I know you have a cabinet meeting, but you have attended upon us and for that we are very grateful. I hope you send this message to your colleagues in cabinets, that this time we are going to recommend to the Speaker that the recommendations that we bring out here will be attached to the approval of their budget allocations such that they ought to discharge themselves of these infractions before their budgets will be approved. So we'll bring it to the floor of Parliament, but just let them know that this is what we intend to do as you go into cabinets, thank you.